Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming this evening to our Committee of the Whole with the special topic of the Charter Amendment. I'm okay? All right. I'd like to begin by calling roll because we need to establish we have quorum here tonight. Counselor Cobb?
Here.
Counselor Pash?
Here.
Counselor Petrus?
Here.
Counselor Maddox? Counselor Russell is excused and Larson is here. So also with us are two very important people that have been extremely involved in this process. Linda Strejewski was Chair of the former Charter Review Commission and Director Bill Hanna is our Law Director for the City of Cleveland Heights. And they're both here as resources. Linda's going to be making a statement. I'm going to make mine first and then Director Hanna is here to clarify any legal issues that may arise that both of us, we'd all like support from. And please feel free, the Q and A will be after this. Any of my fellow colleagues can answer a question if they see a section or hear about a section that they're particularly prioritizing. So this is a statement I'm going to read. Two Charter Review Commissions, the 2019 version and the 2023 to 24 version, am I okay? Okay. Worked very hard on amending the city's charter to align with the current form of government with three equal branches, executive, legislative, and judicial. Council had 22 hours of Charter Review work sessions. All of these meetings are available for your viewing on the Cleveland Heights YouTube channel. Most of the members of council attended those work sessions. Council followed our plan to have our review of the Charter Review Commission's work done to submit to the Law Department. We submitted it in April of this year, planning to have the Law Department's vetted version given back to us in June. The legislation and attached documents were shared for the first reading at council's August 18, 2025 meeting. We held three public hearings the week of August 25, during which we made a few adjustments to the red line version. Would we have liked more time, certainly? That did not happen. This is not a power grab. It is a roadmap that will help future mayors and councils work better together for the citizens of the city. In order to get the Charter Amendment on the November 4 ballot, council approved the current revised version at our September 2 meeting. You, the voters, have this time to review the recordings and read the documents before you vote. In addition to this forum sponsored by the League of Women, this evening is sponsored by council. We want everybody to have a chance, so we have this meeting and then there'll be one on the 27th at the Lee Road Library as well, should you feel you need to have more information. Council's draft of the amended charter is posted on the city's website. Just search on proposed city charter and it'll take you to all the information. There's also a banner at the top that Addy has installed. And thank you, by the way, Addy and Steve, for getting us set up this evening. When I attended all 22 hours of Charter Amendment work sessions, I never intended to do so, as has been suggested, quote, "to give council more powers." I did this work to align the city's charter with a new mayor council form of government, to update the charter that had not been updated for years, including replacing gender-specific language with gender-neutral language. You are always invited to reach out to any of your council members with your comments and concerns. We've heard from many of you that you're concerned this Charter Amendment gives council too much power. I have selected a few articles and sections to begin to address those concerns tonight. During the Q and A, I'm happy to respond to additional concerns you have. I will be referring to Law Director Hanna's summary, which a lot of you have, we also have more if you did not get a copy, to give you the sense of why this Charter Review Commission and council's own revisions were acceptable to those council members who attended council's Charter Review meetings. Per Hannah's summary for Article 3, Section 12, "Council Interactions with City Administration", you've heard us speak about how important it is that we have inquiry. This section addresses that because it, quote, "per Director Hanna, speaks to the good faith collaboration between council and the mayor that this council believes the city's residents deserve and desire, including the ability of council to communicate with members of the new administration, and further underscores the reasonable expectation that council inquiries we responded to by members of administration in a complete and accurate manner, and finally provides that council may require the directors, chiefs, or their designees attend meetings of council or council meetings by request or by ordinance. Council believes that this recommendation of the Charter Review Commission, as modified by council, is consistent with the practice of the overwhelming majority of other cities in the area and throughout the state." Per Director Hanna's summary, Article 3, Section 5, "Compensation," many have expressed concern regarding council setting its own compensation. First, please refer to the Charter Commission's statement that none of the current council members addressed any comments on their own compensation. Secondly, per Law Director Hanna's summary, quote, "Council already has authority to establish the compensation for council and for mayor, but that authority is provided in both Article 3 and Article 4. The revisions provide that councils to consider and determine the compensation for these positions every year and does not require council to make any change in compensation and does not allow for a change to take effect within an elected officer's term." I could not vote on an increase for my own compensation. It also includes a criteria which councils should consider in evaluating compensation, including a report on compensation for these positions, which is to be prepared by the Civil Service Commission." So we will have a body that will help us determine through investigation and compensation levels in other cities, should this become something that in future council wishes to pursue. Please note that council has now adjusted its own salary levels since 2004, per the Charter Review Commission. And the last section I want to draw your attention to is Article 5, Section 1, "Departments." Per Director Hanna, revised to provide that the council, rather than the mayor, determines the function and duties of each department and may create new positions or departments. Council believe that this is the predominant practice in Ohio cities and adds human resources to the list of charter-created city departments." Section 2, "Directors," quote, "revised to require council confirmation of the directors of public works and human resources, in addition to law, finance, and planning and development, planning development, and to provide for mayor authority to remove department heads without council approval, except in the situation where the mayor has terminated the director of law or finance. Those would require council approval." Burgess &amp; Burgess, the firm that the former mayor, Sarin, hired for community research engagement and strategic communications, recommended in their best practices document dated April 3, 2025, that the city set limits on power to avoid overreach. Specifically, and I quote Burgess &amp; Burgess, "The mayor's powers should be robust, but not unchecked. Cleveland Heights can look to Doral's experience where a public vote reduced the mayor's powers after initial overreach. Setting limitations on the mayor's power, such as requiring council approval for the budget, significant policy changes and/or appointments can create a necessary check and balance system that ensures the mayor doesn't dominate the decision-making process. This amended charter does just that, in my opinion." Linda's waiting for her backpack, so please beware, bear with us. Do any of the other council members here want to wish to make a comment? Counselor Pash?
Is this, it's working. The red light's not on, but it's working. Hey, I don't have any prepared remarks, but what I look at this document is a set of kind of mutual expectations between council and the administration. It right sizes a charter that was broken and was used against council these past couple years, specifically in the area of inquiry. You'd ask for something and you'd never see it. We, as a council, can't work that way. And in regards to expectations, I mean, we're down about 10% of our workforce right now. And I think the cause of that is because we don't have an HR department. This is my feeling. This is something that council's putting in. It's like setting an expectation for our administration. And there's things that set the expectations for council, too, when it comes to making appointments. I think it's something we really do need to pass and has been vetted over and over and over again with many hours, hundreds of hours worth of work of citizens and council members. For some to say that it's being rushed or we should break it up into multiple pieces, I mean, I guess where were you at the table when we were trying to come up with that? Because I think we would have listened to that, to that feedback. I think what we have is good and I really hope that our residents will ask the necessary questions about this to get some clarity, just so that they understand it, so that they could vote yes or no on it. So I'm trying to drag my words out until Linda comes, but I don't think that's going to help.
I don't have any remarks. Thanks for coming.
I would like to also say that our gratitude goes out to Law Director Hanna. It cannot go unsaid how many hours he and his staff put into this document, thoroughly vetting and also reaching out to other municipalities to see what best practices are. And when Linda gets back in the room, I will thank her as well. Actually, I'll take a question now. If somebody has a question, they'd like to step up to the mic in the back, please.
Just because I'm going to try to fill the silence for you, Council President. Michael Bennett. I was a member of the Citizens for Elected Mayor PAC that initiated issue 26 back in 2018, 2019, that got us to this point. I'm thrilled by the charter. I'll just put that up there front because what I feel it does is it finishes the job that we started because we were restricted then to just make changes to the mayor's office and basically take out the city manager and insert a mayor. We couldn't make these comprehensive thorough changes. That's the job of the Charter Commission. As you mentioned, we had a commission in 2019 that had done some of that, but that Charter Amendment got tabled in favor of putting issue 26 on the ballot at the time. So to me, this finished the job. It gets us where we should have been four years ago, so I'm thrilled to see it. But I'm going to pick up on the comment you just made. I may have other questions later. I'll reserve that right, if I may, please. You mentioned the exhaustive work that Director Hanna and his team did in researching other municipalities. I'm wondering if you could share with us, really, I don't know if you can quantify how much of this charter represents best practices, or if there were things in our charter that weren't there before that you felt a need because you saw that it was something in charters that worked in other cities? If you could just sort of address how you drew some of the best practices from other cities and how that shows up in this version?
So, can you hear me? Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. So I'm not exactly sure how to respond to that question in a comprehensive way, but I would say that two of the areas where this question has come up have to do with the requirement for legislative approval of the removal of a department head. And the other area is, and this was a little surprising to me, the question of whether the mayor or the legislative authority of the council has the authority to create or prescribe the functions for departments. And with respect to the first of those two issues, council was provided with a number of examples of situations where the approval of the legislative authority is required for the termination of a department head, and they all vary just a little bit. But I think that that is largely considered a best practice that puts the focus on just cause for termination and just sort of keeps things in keeping with the way that a business would function. Typically, when there is an issue with a director, the A mayor would go to the council and have some conversation about that that can occur in executive session under the Ohio Revised Code and under the Cleveland Heights Codified Ordinances and would sort of explain what's happening. And generally, my experience has been that councils are very deferential to a mayor who's finding it difficult to work with a department head. And so, and it's also the case that most department heads don't want to try to force a vote on their termination because that becomes very public and so forth. So I think that that's a best practice in certain respects. This council determined to include that requirement for two positions, the Director of Law and the Director of Finance. The other issue of which branch of government has authority to create departments, abolish departments, prescribe the duties and functions of departments, unless they're already established by charter, I think was a strange one, and I didn't see it coming because the overwhelming majority of communities provide for that authority to reside with the council. I'm not certain if I've ever seen a charter where that authority belonged to the mayor. That would be very unusual. And I think that that came, in this case, through the issue 26 process where there were certain limitations, as you indicated, and a change was made to have that power be given to the mayor. But that was the unusual provision, reverting to the predominant rule in Ohio where the council prescribes the functions and duties of departments and decides, other than those that are prescribed by charter, what departments are needed, what ones aren't needed, you know, whether they can combine departments and so forth. That is very definitely the overwhelming majority of communities in Ohio, certainly, and I think that's a best practice.
Okay. Linda Strejewski has joined us. And before you begin, Linda, I would like to say thank you for all of your work, all of the people that were on the Charter Review Commission. And I think you'll find that her statement also will clarify quite a bit of the information that we need to have clarified, so.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to be here with you tonight, and thank you for your patience while I got my work taken to me. I forgot my bag at home. So good evening, and I want to thank the council for hosting this discussion and to all of you for your interest in the charter. As was noted, I was Chair of the Charter Review Commission. Guy Thielen is here. He was also a member of the commission. I don't see any other commission members in the audience, but everyone on the commission worked very hard. We had a lot of meetings over the course of a year and produced our work product, both an amended charter and a report. I'm going to give you a brief overview of major changes to the charter that were proposed by the council. The handout that you have goes through the charter, section by section. I'm going to proceed by topic, but I'll refer to article and section numbers so you can follow along in your copies if you'd like to. First, a word on the history of the charter. Our 1921 charter, which was written for a city manager form of government, has been amended from time to time, but in a piecemeal way. Even the amendments for the elected mayor were piecemeal. The 2019 ballot issue that brought us an elected mayor focused only on changes to the charter to add a mayor instead of a city manager. It did not include other changes, although the supporters knew that more were needed to balance the powers of the legislative and executive branches. And this was because when citizens propose a ballot issue, they're required to limit it to one topic. So they were advised to stick with changes directly related to adding a mayor. Reflecting this unfinished business, council directed the commission that I chaired to do three things: to recommend changes to the charter in the best interest of the city, including regarding the change to an elected mayor; second, to consider the 2019 commission's recommendations, so there was a prior commission that met for a year and a half; and third, to conduct other due diligence. So we were not trying to favor, we were not told to favor one branch of government over another, but we were to propose changes in the best interest of the city. And I believe the commission followed those instructions. And by the way, we incorporated many of the changes recommended by the 2019 commission, so I certainly do commend their work. The development of the proposed charter occurred over six years. And I want to note that because of some people who've expressed the view that it's being rushed. The city website, as President Larson mentioned, has a lot of information. If you go to the homepage, there's a lovely link right at the top that will take you to all the summaries of the meetings, minutes, recordings of the meetings, agendas. If you want to do a lot of reading and a lot of listening, it's all up there. The council's draft did propose a few changes to the commission's draft. I don't have any issue with the changes that council made. So I hope that you will take advantage of this meeting and a similar meeting the council's going to have later this month to get all your questions answered. You can also call me if you have any questions. My phone number is 216-533-6941, and I will repeat that for you again at the end, but you're welcome to call me. So I want to say, as sort of a, to sum up my view of this, that the proposed amendments, in my opinion, would achieve a big step forward to enhance governance and the operational efficiency of our city. The council initiated this review to implement the elected mayor system effectively while addressing outdated elements from the previous city manager structure. The changes aim to modernize the charter in the best interest of the city, ensuring that it aligns with best practices as of 2025 instead of 1921, and enhances transparency, accountability, and collaboration between the mayor and council. By presenting the amendments as a single cohesive document rather than piecemeal changes, we can rectify the inconsistencies and deficiencies that have arisen from past modifications. The holistic approach will foster effective governance and better meet the evolving needs of our community. So I'm going to go over major changes, and I'm going to review these in three different categories. The first category are changes to implement the elected mayor form of government. The second are changes related to filling vacancies and removal. And the third is changes related to elections and modernizing features. So going to the first one, the balance of power features, changes to implement the elected mayor form of government. The first one is that the proposed charter would require collaboration. The mayor and the council have to work together. This enhances accountability and communication. This is in Article 3, Section 12. It's related to council's inquiry rights, which is covered in Article 3, Section 6. Since the change in government, we've heard a lot of mention about the so-called right of inquiry. That is a city manager remnant in the charter today. I refer to it as kind of a fossil. The proposed charter deletes this constraint on council's right of inquiry, and this will improve transparency and information flow. And again, it works in coordination with the new Article 3, Section 12. The proposed charter also injects accountability for the administration. The city administrator and other administration officials, like directors, must respond to council inquiries and attend meetings. This will foster communication and better governance. This is addressed in Article 3, Section 12, Article 4, Section 4, and Article 5, Section 2. The proposed charter clarifies some rules. Under it, the mayor retains the authority to supervise departments through the directors with a clear delineation of responsibilities, and it also requires the mayor to perform duties set by charter or by the council. This is in Article 4, Section 3. With respect to departments, council can create or combine departments, which enhances operational flexibility, but council cannot combine or eliminate those departments that are mandated by the charter. So those include law, finance, planning, public safety, public works, community services, parks and rec, and human resources. This is Article 5, Section 1. And as Director Hanna mentioned, this is not an outlier approach. This is common in cities that have a mayor council form of government like we do. There are shared powers to appoint and remove directors. The mayor retains the power to appoint directors. Council retains the right to approve directors of law, finance, planning, and adds to that directors of human resources and public works. The mayor retains the right to remove any director, except only the removal of director of law and finance must get council approval. This is Article 5, Section 2.
What was the last one?
Law and finance.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. These changes ensure checks and balances. The mayor's legislative powers. The mayor retains the right to introduce legislation with the new provision that the introduction cannot be unduly delayed. The mayor retains a veto right, except for initiatives, referendums, recalls, or charter amendments. And this balances the rights of the mayor, the council, and the voters. Article 5, Section 5. Finally, as to council meetings. The mayor's participation in council's executive sessions is by invitation of the council president, subject to council veto. And at council meetings, the mayor is subject to council rules on speaking opportunities and time limits. This again relates to balance of powers. Article 4, Section 5. With respect to virtual meetings, you'll remember that during COVID, there was special rules in effect by the state of Ohio that allowed virtual meetings. That's no longer in effect, but because Cleveland Heights is a home rules city, it can provide in its charter for virtual meetings. So the proposed charter permits virtual meetings and that council will set rules by ordinance to allow flexibility for council meetings that would be held remotely. And my impression is council doesn't plan for this to be a regular thing, but it could be helpful in certain circumstances. I'm moving on now to the second major category of changes, changes related to filling vacancies and removal. Filling vacancies. So anybody here a fan of filling vacancies? We do that quite a bit here in Cleveland Heights. So we've had a few. We just filled a mayoral vacancy, and that went pretty smoothly. And we're now filling a council vacancy. The voters approved a deadline for council appointments a few years ago, which was a good change. Deadlines are helpful. The proposed charter extends the deadline by a few days, from 45 to 60 days, and this was intended to allow a little bit more time for vetting applicants. This is in Article 3, Section 4. When there's a vacancy filled by appointment, and this applies to the council or to the mayor, the proposed charter extends the period that the appointed person would serve before there's an election for the unexpired term. And this facilitates attracting candidates for appointment and candidates who will run for the unexpired term. This is addressed in Article 3, Section 4, and Article 4, Section 7. Now, I should say that in the case of the recent vacancy in the office of the mayor, that's kind of a special case. That one, that our temporary mayor will stay in office until the end of the year, when the new mayor will take over. On mayoral vacancy protocols, the charter today addresses how to fill a vacancy that's caused if the mayor should become unavailable. So let's say, God forbid, the mayor's hit by a bus. The proposed charter establishes a clear process for determining when a mayor is unavailable. It also streamlines the process of appointing a successor, so it cuts down the number of steps, particularly in a case where the council president, who would normally be the first person considered, isn't able to do it or doesn't want to do it. And finally, it removes the requirement that an appointed mayor must be a member of council, which provides more flexibility in appointing a full-time mayor. This is in Article 4, Section 7. On the removal of council members, charters typically provide for council to have the right to remove a council member for specified reasons. And our charter has this today. In the proposed charter, the removal provision is changed in a couple of ways. The reasons for removal were revised, including to delete the persistent failure to follow rules of council and also to add some bad acts that could trigger a removal. And these are things like misfeasance and conviction of a felony, so pretty serious things. The proposed charter clarifies that someone who is accused is not voting on their own removal, and it also makes it harder to remove a council member in that it raises the threshold for removing a council member essentially from five to six votes. So this supports stability and fairness in the process. This is in Article 3, Section 3. As to the mayor, the charter right now has a provision on forfeiture of office by the mayor. The heading for this says removal, but it doesn't really provide for removal. It provides for forfeiture. So the mayor forfeits office upon disqualification, like the mayor moves out of the city, conviction of a felony, or a declaration that the mayor is legally incompetent. So this is just keeping what's already in the charter. There is no change on this. Council does not have any right to remove the mayor in the current charter or under the proposed charter. So the final category is changes related to elections and modernizing features. First thing is signature requirements for petitions. The proposed charter sets a fixed number of signatures for candidate positions, so it signifies the process of knowing how many signatures you need. So using 2023 as an example, this would change the requirement from 359 to 300 for mayoral candidates and 225 for council candidates. This is in Article 7, Section 2. Relating to signatures needed for initiatives, referenda, recalls, or charter amendments. The basis for determining the required number of signatures is simplified by changing it from a percentage of electors to a percentage of votes in the last general municipal election. This reduces the signature requirements by about half, making it easier for citizens to to engage. This is in Article Eight and Article 12. On the budget, the proposed charter incorporates procedures that were used in 2023 for the development of the 2024 budget. Everybody seemed to really like that process. Both the administration and council members thought it went great. It worked. We might as well use it again. And this is helpful just for making the process run a little bit more smoothly, and it ensures transparency and efficiency in the process. With respect to ethics and training, there's a new ethics provision. Right now, the charter has conflict of interest rules that apply to the mayor and members of council. The new provision extends that to cover employees, and it also mandates training for new officials, which promotes accountability and better functioning of our government. This is in Article 10. There currently is no consistent orientation or training for the mayor or for council. The training requirement is based on the Lakewood Charter. There also was a nondiscrimination clause added reinforcing the city's commitment to equality. This is in Article 10, Section Six. And on the salary adjustments, again, as President Larson mentioned, this change was initiated by the Charter Review Commission. We had the mayor and members of council came to talk to us. None of them raised the issue of getting salary adjustments. This was our idea because we realized that council salaries haven't been changed since 2004, which seems like a long time to go without any adjustment. So this would require the council to make a determination every four years as to what the salary should be. They don't have to change them. It could leave them the way they are, and any change would only be effective in the following term. So nobody's voting to give themselves an immediate salary increase. This is all consistent with current Ohio law. Currently, the president of council gets 25% more than the members, which reflects extra work. Probably doesn't really reflect all the extra work, but it's a little bit of a bump to reflect the extra work. So that's put into the charter, and it introduces objective criteria for council salaries and a specific periodic review for the mayor's salary. Right now, there's nothing that says the mayor's salary ever gets reviewed in the charter. And it also contemplates that the Civil Service Commission would make recommendations. So again, this injects some neutrality to it, provides you with some data points. And so it's not just pulling numbers out of the air. There's some factual basis for making a decision. These amendments are designed to foster more effective governance, to facilitate citizen engagement, and to ensure that our city operates in alignment with current standards. So I'm hoping you'll all support these changes. I do want to mention that the proposed charter amendment did not include ranked choice voting. The commission did recommend ranked choice voting. Council determined to defer ranked choice voting to allow for further council consideration of that and a more robust program of public education about how it works. So I thank you for your attention. I appreciate the opportunity to be on the commission and to see you here tonight and to ask you to please support the charter. And again, you can call me if you have any questions, 216-533-6941. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Linda. Now, Q and A. It's your turn to talk. So if anyone has a question, feel free to step up to the microphone. Go ahead.
How are you all doing?
Good, thank you. Thanks for coming.
I have a simple question. How does one join the city council?
You run for a seat on the council in an electoral campaign. So you submit the petition that she was talking about to the Board of Elections, get the signatures that you need to have. The Board of Elections validates your candidacy, and then you will be on the ballot for a municipal election where there are seats open. This particular voting period, we have four seats open. So, but I would encourage you to do it, please. We need young people. We really do.
Awesome. Thank you.
And oh, vacancies? Yes, thank you very much. There will be a vacancy in January. We're also accepting vacancy application right now because President or Mayor Pocuta departed our, you know, the council. So the application is on the website, and it closes on the 10th. So if you're interested in applying for that, it's only for a three-month period. So because that's when this particular vacancy ends, but I would also encourage you to look at that, and please think about it seriously.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Lou? You sat down, and I decided you didn't want to speak after all?
Sure, no, I've got plenty of things to ask. I don't know where to start, but I guess, you know, one of them that I have is, I think, Jim, when you started off the conversation tonight, you made comment of, if you haven't spoken up yet, you know, where were you to speak up? And I think the most powerful meeting that I watched was the one in June 2024. That's when it was full attendance of council, the one and only really until the end of August. But that was full attendance of council, and that was really the handoff between council and the committee. And it was really good information, and what really struck me were the points that were brought up by Councilman Maddox. He shared some really valid points, and from that moment, the question I would have is how many of those were or weren't addressed until August 26th of 2025? So when we ask, here was a moment where a council member shared his opinion, someone that I value, and yet it took over a year, and it really took us until the 11th, ninth inning, 10th inning on that Wednesday and Friday to really hammer out the final details of the points that he brought up. And that's something that, again, when I step back and resonate, you know, the process of how this whole thing took place, you know, we lost 25% of the brain power that I looked for out of all of leadership, because we got seven brains there, and typically it was about five that attended or four that attended. But then I also lost a certain demographic that did not participate during that whole process. So that was one element that just resonated with me, and I felt that he did share some, it's the best video out of all of them for anybody to watch. Watch June of 2024. I highly recommend it.
Thank you, Lou. I would add too that it would concern me that Councilman Maddox wasn't at all our meetings, and neither was Vice President Russell, and neither one of them are here this evening. And I don't mean to use that as an excuse for the points that you're making, but the participation that we've had and the discussions we've had. So hopefully, we made the changes at that meeting in August that Councilman Maddox had asked us to make.
Which, that was another question I had. So now that you're president, and I assume it's your, it's a responsibility of the president to coordinate the agenda, to really coordinate the dates of those meetings, correct? You know, to try and balance it. So I guess when I, if, now knowing your position, if I were to ask you over the course of a year, would you be able to get seven people in the same room six times in that one year? That's it. I mean, that is really the objective to happen, and it didn't take place. And I look again at the hours that were sent. There were two onsetters. I have a list of the hours that some of those were set. But again, it goes back to saying, hey, why aren't you not showing up? What is it that bothers you about the current situation for you not to participate? We need your valuable input, and that did not take place. So when I, when I look at that, that's another one. When you point that out, I ask myself as a president, isn't it part of your responsibility to make sure that you can coordinate to get all seven council people together to just hammer it out and discuss it? And that's not a lot to ask over the course of 12, 14 months.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate that viewpoint. Anybody else wish to ask a question?
President, Council Posh.
Larson, can I, can I take a stab at this? So I'm a new council member. Well, maybe not that new anymore. It's felt like four years already. So, no, but seriously, we have a clerk of council, and one of the things that she does when we try to schedule meetings is she does a doodle poll. And I don't know if you're familiar with doodle. It's just an email that gets, sorry, thank you. A doodle poll is a, it's an online tool where every council member is essentially asked to fill out a bunch of dates on whether or not they can attend a meeting, such as all the, pretty much all the meetings we have. We just, just did this with the council appointments to try to come up with two dates. And I will tell you, and I'm not going to name names here, but I would say consistently five people fill that out. And that's what's used to try to schedule the meetings. And then there's reminders that go out, and at that point, you know, we give it in the hands of our, of our council to deal with it. But I think the, if there's, if we can't make a date, you know, I reach out to our council clerk and say, hey, I can't do any of these. Can you add a couple more dates? I mean, there's an interactive process, and that doesn't happen with everybody. So I'm just, just want to say that.
Thank you, Councilor Posh. Go ahead.
So I think it's a valid point. I thought there was, I don't have the attendance tallies, but I thought there was generally good attendance, although not perfect unanimous attendance. And certainly toward the end, I think the attendance improved, and there was an opportunity to address, for council to address issues that had coalesced at that point into some documents that were more final, and there were some really good discussions. The other point I was going to make, though, is that in some cases, folks weren't able to attend because they were out of town, they had things going on that meant that they couldn't physically be at City Hall, but they might otherwise have been willing and able to attend. And the virtual meeting attendance provision that's in the proposed first amended charter, in some of those cases, might have allowed greater attendance at some of those meetings.
To that point, and thank you, Lou, for raising that. To the point of not, many people have said there are things they would rather, that they would have liked to see in this charter, and maybe some of those things that you mentioned, Councilman, Councilman Maddox mentioned, aren't in this charter. I would suggest that while this charter is our first fully amended and restated charter, I think I'm correct, that's, that's the title on it, it doesn't have to be the last. And not, you know, not everybody's going to be happy all the time with everything that's in the results. And I, for one, don't think we should let the great be the enemy of the very, very good here, that we have a solid amended charter here, which council and the administration can use going forward to see how it works, to make sure that the provisions, provisions that were offered when they get approved by the voters, I hope, are the right ones and are the best ones. And maybe they need some tweaking, or maybe there are things that a councilman or a member of the Charter Review Commission had wished had been there that didn't make it this time. So to that point, I'm wondering, I guess, council president or whoever else, can you speak to further iterations of the charter? And if there are things that people wanted to see in it now that aren't, what could be the process? Is there an opportunity down the road? And in the meantime, to approve this one to get things going under the new form of government and in a much more smooth, much smoother way than four years ago, and future opportunities to make further changes by the council or the citizens?
I'm going to let Councilor Posh answer, and then I'll speak. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm a new council member. I guess I can't say that anymore. The one item that I wish was sooner than later, I need to rephrase this. I'm just going to say ranked choice voting is something I think that we need to do as a city. It is a very complicated thing to sort of explain to an electorate, not that I'm trying to say that our electorate can't comprehend it, but there's a sense of urgency, I believe, just with a new mayor to get these revisions in. Many of us here have made a commitment to put something on as quickly as we possibly can in the first voting cycle in 2026 to do ranked choice voting. It was informed to us that we can't do it anyways for, Law Director Hanna, three years? Yeah, there's a couple of years before we'd even, we'd even be able to actually do it, even if we passed it. But the deal is try to get this, try to get this piece through and then do ranked choice voting, because I think that would really help in things like the mayoral primaries and also the council races.
So with respect, with respect to how and when council could take up consideration of future amendments, I just wanted to mention that under the Ohio constitution, which really governs very comprehensively the process for charter amendments, a council can send proposed charter amendments to the electorate at any time, as long as the vote to do that takes place not less than 60 or more than 120 days prior to the election where it would be considered. And if they were to vote on something like that, hopefully this would be knowing, but if they were to vote on something like that when an election that's already scheduled doesn't fall within that window, then a special election is required. And I say that in part because for initiated ordinances, for example, if the electors approve an initiated ordinance, council's prohibited under the charter from repealing it or making changes that are so substantial that they would essentially repeal it for two years. And so that initiated ordinance is locked then for a two-year period, but that is not true for charter amendments. You could amend a charter at one election, and then at the very next election, go back and make some additional changes that may or may not touch on things that were already amended. But those opportunities are present, and so residents, voters can approach their legislators and talk with them about changes they want to see, try to get something going, and council can take that up at any time.
I just like to weigh in on the level of participation. So regardless of whether all council members were able to make every meeting, at the end, there was an opportunity for everyone to weigh in and suggest changes to the draft. In order for those changes to come about, you had to be able to persuade five other council members to go along with those changes. So to the extent that anyone believes that, any council member believes that they didn't have a fair opportunity because they weren't at every meeting, that just simply wouldn't be true, because we were making changes up until the very end. And again, you needed to have five council members agree to what we were going to have the voters decide on. So I do believe that there was majority consensus, almost what I would call a supermajority consensus, that this was the best charter for this city at this time.
I would like to emphasize what he just said. People had the opportunity, and we all knew when the meetings were. If we weren't in town, several of us here have zoomed, and as well as our missing members this evening. So opportunity was there, and we did make several modifications on the very last day that we met, and we got a five supermajority. And I think we had an anonymous, excuse me, unanimous. I'd also liked, in terms of what you're saying, Michael, as we, hopefully we input this charter, as we go forward, we're going to run into challenges to how it was worded, or what a particular provision created. Like, you know, when we had the 45 days, for instance, to find, fill a vacancy, very difficult to do that in 45 days. So thus, we are looking at 60 days. So things like that, that we can certainly have our clerk of court, clerk of council tracking, and anytime anybody wants us to look at how the effect of this could have modified a situation that we, we have no idea what's coming forward, we can be, we should be tracking it. I really do believe we should be tracking that and be ready if something looks to be something that we need to modify, amend. So it's not going to go unnoticed. Anybody else?
Look, do I have to go over there to see the microphone? Do you have a reason that they're recording it? Okay. Okay. Do you have it up?
I can also walk a mic over to anybody that can't get up or doesn't want to get up.
My name is Kyle Aldridge. I have a question on, it's on page three, point. Okay, yes, it's the old microphone. Okay, is that better? No, you need to be closer. Closer? Yes. Okay, now I see. Okay, on page three, it's section, it says F, Section Six, appointees. It says, principal revision is to specify that for contracts engaging consultants or independent contracts, the president of the council, rather than the mayor, the mayor is authorized to sign. So I presume that that's a change from the mayor signing them now, currently, to the president of council. And what I'm interested in is, could you give an example of something that occurred over the past year that would have changed from how it was executed as in, to what it would then be done as if the, if the president did it?
So for, for example, when council wanted to retain the services of an attorney to assist city council, and that contract required the mayor's signature, there assist city council and that contract required the mayor's signature, there was some lengthy delay in that signature being affixed to the contract when time was of the urgency for council to have those legal services. So that's the reason for that provision. It's not doing away with any safeguards or anything. It's just to make sure that for some reason, the mayor were unavailable or the mayor wanted to slow walk something because he didn't want council to have the benefit of legal services, then we would have the means to have that contract executed.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I might also add that, that authority for the council president is only under Section 6 of Article 3, which deals with council appointees and council hiring people. Every other contract in the city still must be signed only by the mayor.
I'm looking at the summary overview about Article 10 and ethics. You've expanded the ways that you judge ethics by, let me see, using extensive existing case law, the Ethics Commission, the Ohio Attorney General provides guidance. I think that's great, but it's also pretty opaque. Who knows what's in all of those particular forms? And perhaps there is too much specificity within them to put in the charter. But I wonder if, if the people, as well as our elected officials, really understood the standard of care and ethics that should be used, if it might have avoided under someone else, giving a contract to your friends without a bid? If, how do you all know specifically where the line is and the standards that you should follow?
Yeah, the, the new ethics provision provides for two, a few different elements. First of all, it, it makes reference to a very solid amount of learning and rules under Ohio law that relate to how elected officials are expected to behave. But more importantly, it provides for training. There already are conflict of interest rules and those apply right now to the mayor and council, but that's all that's in the current charter. And the Charter Review Commission felt that we needed to have a much more robust set of expectations because Cleveland Heights would, I mean, I'd like to think that everybody in Cleveland Heights wants to have our public officials conducting their duties in accordance with ethics requirements. And some of the ethics requirements are pretty obvious. You know, you don't steal, you don't give contracts to relatives, you know, without bidding, and there's lots of other precautions if somebody is related. So, I mean, that's kind of common sense stuff. But the reason for referring to the Ohio ethics, the whole Ohio ethics regime, is because there is a lot of learning there and there's a lot of good guidance that helps people to understand whether there's been a breaking of the rules or not. But the training is a very important component part of it.
I'm very glad to see those additional resources available. I'm just wondering, wouldn't it be helpful if we unders, if we, the people, also understood the quality of care that you're supposed to be showing? Cause this tells us nothing and maybe there's too much.
Well, there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot. And, and you wouldn't necessarily want to put specific rules into the charter because it evolves.
It would exclude other things.
It evolves. And, and by referring to Ohio ethics laws, there probably are things in Ohio ethics laws today that weren't there 20 years ago. You know, these things get improved as, you know, people come up with different ways to betray the public trust, something new gets added to the rules. So you don't want to freeze it in time and then have a fossil when you really need something that's evolving a little bit more.
Good. Thank you.
I would also like to add that the specific wording at the beginning of Article 10, Karen, is the citizens of Cleveland Heights rightfully expect city officials, both elected and appointed and city employees, to behave legally and ethically. That charges us with what we need to keep in mind as we swear, take our oath. It's also states that all officials and employees are expected to treat each other with respect, which we're, you know, we're seeing and working together for the good of the city. And it's residents to make the city a desirable place to live. Citizens who also rightfully expect honesty, respect and fair treatment from city officials and employees. City officials have a responsibility to educate, monitor and support all employees and city representatives in this mission. I think those are really important words for the moment we're in right now. And I thank the commission for putting those words in there.
So just, just, just so everybody's aware, you know, when you're a city council member or when you get appointed, is it on? Do I do this whisper all the time? It's like I'm, it's like I'm kissing it. Ooh. Okay. Okay. Here we go. So the, the Ohio Ethics Commission has a requirement that council members, whether you're appointed or not, have a certain number of days to do an ethics filing. And, you know, part of that is some financial disclosure statements. It's committing to doing things, but this is judged, not judged, but it's set up at the state of Ohio level. And we all have to do that. I mean, when I was appointed a year ago in, in April, I had like, I think 15 days in order to do it. I mean, they, they take it very, very seriously. And then on a regular basis, there is, we do have to submit to some training where you have to kind of watch a video and you gotta like approve it. And there's people with this, within the city that monitors us, like our clerk, to make sure that we actually do that. Cause it is, it is a state requirement. So you have the charter stuff, but you also have all this important stuff that the state legislature requires. It's Ohio Revised Code. So if you're unaware, it's, it's a lot more than what you just see, see in the charter. There's a whole nother layer of ethics accountability that we have to uphold as an elected official.
Okay. My name is Len Friedson. I just have a, a brief comment. This calendar year has been a challenge to the city, to the council, to pretty much everybody. And it's behind us sort of now. But during the course of this year, Charter Review, while its work was done in '24, the council had to review that, that stuff during 2025. And to be very candid with you, speaking for myself, it was lost. That review process, I knew it was going on for, for the council. Did I pay close attention? No, not until the draft came out. Now, I know the draft finally came out later than anticipated, but I will tell you that it did give me pause and that I was pretty uncomfortable for a bit with it. Nonetheless, having read it and thought about the process and thought about my reaction to the process, I am voting for, in favor of this charter. I agree that it is necessary and I agree it was especially necessary this year. I get that. Am I entirely happy with it? I have some issues that are not large, they're small, they're there nonetheless. So I hope that this is a one-off, meaning a one-off in time, that I did feel that it was rushed for the, for the public, not for you, for you necessarily, but for the public that it felt, it came as a surprise, as its scope. Nonetheless, it is in the best interest of the city. I'm going to vote for it and I hope in the future, the council will build in any future efforts to give the, the public more time to absorb, more time to discuss and more time for the council to say, I'm rethinking that and I change, I agree with you. I'm voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. I'm about ready to pull this to a close. Is there anybody else has a question? Gil, go ahead.
So during council's many, many hour, oh, gotta eat the microphone. During council's many, many hours of discussion of the Charter Review Commission, a number of provisions were discussed and Mr. Hannah was frequently asked for his comments on, I'm not sure this is actually a word, enforceability of the provisions. So my question to you now is, are you confident that the various thou shouts and thou shalt nots that are in the charter have adequate enforcement mechanisms either within the charter or enabled by council's ability to pass ordinances? Can we, can we enforce this?
So I would, I would say that yes, I'm comfortable with the language of the proposed first amended charter. I think that it probably has an improved level of enforceability of the requirements within it. But there were, as you know, in charter related discussions and other discussions, not necessarily focused on the charter, questions about, well, the charter says this, but then it also kind of lets you think this. How do you decide? And my answer in those cases was, we can have conversations, some of which might be privileged about that in an appropriate setting. But ultimately, only a judge can make those decisions. And I think that the, the balancing act that's reflected in the proposed first amended charter reduces the areas in which those types of conflicts exist so that the need to get into any kind of a legal battle should be diminished. I think that it's a cleaner, clearer document as a result of the work that went into it.
Seeing no more hands raised, except for Lou's. Oh, she's, okay. Thank you.
Gil, one of the things that actually caught me by surprising, don't get me wrong, I'm really happy that you've become council president during this window, but I was somewhat surprised that the vice president take that role automatically. And I was told that that is because it's written in charter. And so when I ask myself, let's forget about the recall, when Tony's sick, when he was council president for one day, I presume that she becomes president for that one day, correct? Should something horrible happen to the president and let's say he was diagnosed with something and had to step down, does one vote for the council president at that point? Or would the council vice president become the interim president at that point? If, if Tony was ill and could not hold his position as council president, would that vice president automatically assume that role? So then the next question I would also have is during the recall process, if Tony elected not to become mayor, the vice president would have the right of first refusal to take the position as mayor, correct? Yet in a weird way, in this situation, what should have been just, I guess, the rightful move from vice president to presidency had to be up for charter. And that, that I found a little bit confusing and I guess, you know, I, I wonder when it's scripted for the future, whether that's something that should be addressed.
Are you, are you talking about filling the vacancy in the mayor's office?
No, I'm talking about filling the vacancy of the, of the council president, just the flow from vice president to president. What are the two roles? So we know that when, when the president is sick for a day, the vice president steps in and becomes president for that, that one evening.
Well, they don't become president. I think they would just preside over a meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, interim, they're going to sit in the front and center, right? I mean, so then the next step is, should somebody be ill for a while, let's say for six months or actually cannot participate, does one elect a new president during that time if, if he has stepped down? Or would vice president step in for that interim?
So the, the current charter, and that's where the determination about, you know, how the vacancy in the office of council president last week had to be evaluated, says that in the event of a vacancy in either the office of president or vice president, or in the event the council determines by at least four of its members that either of those officials is unable to fulfill the duties of their respective office, the council shall immediately proceed to elect one of its members to serve in such office. And so the, the case of the extended absence that you mentioned, that might implicate the question of, would four members of council determine that that person was not able to fulfill the duties of the position? Under the current language, if that had occurred, then another person would be selected to fill that role. There's not a preclusion that the vice president couldn't be considered, but it's not an ascension when there's an absence in the council presidency.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll take, we have to start wrapping up too, cause Steve's got to be out of here by nine. So what, I think there was one more question behind you, Guy? No, you're okay? All right, go ahead, Guy. Last question for this evening.
Councilman Russell had questions about why wasn't she, I'm sorry, I've spoken to Councilman Russ, Councilman Russell about the amended charter. I reached out to her, asked her what her concerns were. One of those was, why is it that I, that the vice president doesn't become the president? So I did some research and I looked at Lakewood and Shaker Heights and South Euclid, and the provisions are exact, almost exactly precisely the same, word of the same. There is no presumption that the vice president of council becomes the president of council in any case. There, the president of council is elected then from the members of council. I don't know if that helps.
I'm very grateful this evening for all of you being here. I'm grateful that my council colleagues were here this evening. I'm grateful that Law Director Hannah and former chair of the, the Charter Review Commission, Linda Strieffsky, were able to join us this evening. I think it makes for good discussions. Please remember that we have another, one last opportunity, at least to speak with council on the 27th of October. There is, is your meeting open? Cleveland Heights Dems are having an open meeting on this Thursday at 6:00, 6:00 PM. And there will be opportunities there to hear the information about the charter and to ask questions.
We'll have an overview, just like we did tonight. President Larson is going to speak in favor of the charter. Drew Herzog is going to speak against the charter. And then there will be opportunities for Q and A. Yes.
And Lee Road Library. Yeah. Yes. No?
Your meeting's at the community center.
Thank you. We're all over the city, so no, it could have been anyplace. That's Thursday night at 6:00.
At the community center.
Yeah. I'd also like to say thank you, Steve. He has to put all this equipment out and then he now needs to bring it home to the city hall this evening. So I appreciate you very much. And at this point in time, it is 10, excuse me, 8:40. Yeah, we're really missing, the library's all closed up. It's 8:40 PM and thank you.
7:40.